Governor, Father, we thank you for this evening and we ask that you will bless all assembled here today. We ask that you will help us to do that which is closest to our heart and that is to humble and surrender to your will. Then we may represent this community in accordance with your desires. These blessings and others we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Thinking you may be seated. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Ms. Olive?
Present.
Mr. Gordon?
Present.
Mr. Lenore?
Present.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you very much. First, we want to welcome all of you to the meeting of the Mayor and Board of All the Persons of City of Bastrop. We're so pleased that all of you came. Thank you for being here and thank you for participating in the process of governing and witnessing the activities of our city. Uh, we are so pleased to have you all. Thank you for being here. Members of Board of All the Persons, I've already mentioned to you, Mr. Doug Lawrence, our city attorney, is away on other business. He had a commitment and I asked him to, uh, provide us with legal representation. And we're pleased to have Ms. Lakoshia Roberts with us. Ms. Roberts is formerly, uh, city attorney with the City of Monroe. And she also served, uh, as an assistant to the Attorney General of State Louisiana and now she's in private practice. So, Ms. Roberts, thank you very much for coming and counseling with us and be of assistance. Okay, uh, I don't really have any announcements tonight. I know you're glad to hear that, huh? So, that's good then. Uh, other than the stock market, I don't know where it closed, probably around six hundred or something tonight. So, from a, from a financial perspective, uh, I just left Baton Rouge today with the firefighters' retirement system and representative from the municipal retirement system came in and our financial advisors were there. And everybody is saying that to hold on and it, it, it does matter. It does matter to us here on West Madison and Washington and Jefferson Street. It matters what they're doing in, in, in New York and Chicago and other financial matters. Uh, it matters as was seen by the closure of North Point Ford and by other activities that are going on. So, this economic crunch, crunch is, is happening. But everybody's advice is not to panic and to hold on. To hold on, you know, people who have IRAs and 401Ks and somebody call them 101Ks now because they're going down so much. But people who have those investment stocks and bonds and mutual funds and investments for retirement and for college and all that, rather than panic, just wait. And the way that that cycle seems to go, it goes down and then it starts going back up. But when people used to do that thing called a limbo, it was used to be how low can you go? And that sometimes we wonder about that in the financial markets and people are hoping that we're getting to the bottom and then stuff will get cheap enough that people will start buying and then it takes off and goes the other way. So, my message to our public and to ourselves is just, just be patient and, and wait and because the whole economy is impacted. This is not something that's just gonna hurt one sector of our world. Anytime that starts impacting the market in England and China and Hong Kong and other places, you know that it's serious, but everybody's in the same position. Item number four on our agenda is the minutes of our previous minutes. You receive these in your packets. This is the meeting, uh, minutes of the September 11th meeting 2008. What's your pleasure?
May I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from September 11th, 2008, the right of meeting?
Mr. Lenore makes a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Olive seconds his motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no and the ayes have it. Item number five is Finance Committee Report. Mr. Hamlin?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 08-1252, business claim for the month of September.
Okay, Mr. Hamlin makes the motion.
I'll second Mr. Hamlin's motion.
Mr. Gordon does. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no and the ayes have it. Mr. Vereen? Mr. Vereen, congratulations on being in the runoff.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right then. So, you got a little work to do for the next...
About three, nearly, three more weeks. That's it. Yeah, a month.
A month from, from a couple of days ago. November 4th, 6th?
That's correct. November 4th.
Okay. And at this time, uh, we take the opportunity to remind people to go and, and vote because this is presidential election and all kind of other elections. And we'll be selecting a city marshal, Mr. Mark Vereen, or Ms. Lisa Chafford. And I think those are only two things on our ballot, as far as you know.
Yeah, local.
Okay. We're good enough. You have a report on Main Street?
I do. I'm gonna run a, we've got, this is our event season when we start to have events trying to get people to come to Bastrop. Uh, so, some of them we've already heard about, but I do want to reiterate them again so that the people out, uh, at home can also get them down in their calendars. Uh, we always have our trick or treat on the square, which we call Which Way to Main Street. That is gonna be Friday, uh, October 31st from 4:00 to 6:00. That's the times that it always is. So, we like to stick to that when people, uh, so that they know when they are. Downtown merchants will give out candy. It's a good, safe way to bring your kids out to, uh, trick or treat.
What time, excuse me? What time is that, Governor?
4:00 to 6:00. Yeah. And I know y'all usually, I would encourage y'all to be out on the corner too. They like seeing y'all giving out the candy. And it takes a lot of people to man the, that corner. I know that. Starts backing up. Uh, then the next event will be, uh, Main to Main happens. That's a statewide event throughout Louisiana that the Lieutenant Governor, uh, gives us funding to have all the towns having the, an event in, in November. And it's called Main to Main and you can have different events. Ours will be the, uh, we're bringing back Equinox Jazz Orchestra. That's the twenty-piece, twenty-two-piece jazz orchestra that came last year and the year before. And it's on a Sunday and we're doing a brunch after church. Come by, have the brunch and then walk over to the roast. The brunch will be at the Visitor Center. So, it's something new we're trying. We think it'll be, uh, a really neat event for people.
What day is that, Mike?
That's gonna be November the 2nd. Then on November the 9th is the annual holiday open house. And I know, uh, that happens throughout the city. It's not just something that happens downtown, but I want to make everybody aware of that. That is one of the busiest days for our local merchants. And like the mayor said, times are tough. So, I would encourage you, especially this time of year in the holiday season, shop locally because we want to keep our businesses that we've got here. It's so important to keep the city going and keep our economy. Uh, other than that, we've got, we are, since we, I was up here last, we did get notification that we had gotten the funding from Central Walsworth had worked to get us for downtown development. That was a $75,000, uh, funding from the state. So, we're excited about that. Ms. Goldman had just notified us this week that we did finally get the, we were kinda nervous that the hurricanes may have cut into our funds, but it did not. They did not cut the funding. So, that is downtown development. We've got some things planned to improve downtown and, and events to bring people to downtown. Uh, it will also offset some of my salary through, so it's not a burden on the city and it, some activity at the Visitor Center as well. Some other things we've got planned, just so kind of people be on the radar, is, uh, they're gonna, we have a new director at the Visitor Center, Ms. Linda Hayman, and she's gonna start doing, she wants to bring seniors back downtown. So, she's gonna do like a movie night, like dinner and a movie for the seniors. So, I would just, everybody keep aware of that. Watch the papers because we're really gonna promote that and we're hoping for a good turnout because we want to get people back downtown, uh, enjoying things. Uh, failed to mention last time I was here too, uh, that the Petresses had donated a piece of property over to Main Street that we converted into a parking lot. It's a really big asset for downtown. It's next to the Visitor Center, which is great. So, we're really appreciative of them and I did want to give them thanks. And I know y'all are appreciative of it as well. It turned out to be really nice. It's got the same lighting as the downtown and the same banners that say free parking. It's a nice parking lot then, and we really did need it. So, uh, another big plus for us. Fall cleanup scheduled. I'm involved in that also. Uh, that fall cleanup, October 25th. Something else just to kind of put on the calendar. Other than that, with all these events, that's kind of where I'm at this time of year. It's event season for me. So, it takes a lot of planning and coordination to get all those to, uh, going and, and done in time. Also too, I'd want to point out and give some recognition too, I don't know if y'all noticed, the entry signs coming into Bastrop. Uh, I know you've been out of town, Mayor, and you may have seen them too. Uh, some ladies, I had asked them would they decorate them and I thought they did a real nice job. They got scarecrows and things like that. So, it really makes, coming in town, we're gonna look, we look as good as any town. So, we're real proud of it.
Mark, one of the things we're gonna do, since you mentioned entry sign, I, I have part of staff working on trying to find, I, I'm still not satisfied with the lighting on the sign coming into Bastrop. So, we're trying to find up some, some light with some greater intensity.
Yeah.
Because it's lighted, but I think we can do a little bit better with our lighting. So, we're gonna try to find some.
We agree. We even contacted Stuart Irving.
Have you? You've been working on that as well?
But we're, it needs some help. We agree.
Okay. Scarecrows look good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Gordon has a question?
Mark, did, uh, you may have mentioned Gene King. Is that, is that already coming past?
Well, they're doing it like every other month. They are having one in November and that's a Rose event. So, I don't have it listed on my, I should know that and I don't. But it is, there is, it is in November, I believe.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Vereen? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mark mentioned, mentioned cleanup and, you know, as I said, you know, I always have to be in Baton Rouge the day before and the day of council meeting. And I was, I just left there and got back here about before this afternoon. I thought we went in bad shape, but it is amazing. Baton Rouge is still in a catastrophic state. They have tree, they, they clean up, it seemed like they've done a lot of cleaning on lots. But they have stuff piled on the side of, of the road all over the place. Firefighters' retirement system and the state police retirement sys, systems, uh, headquarters out on Brentwood and, and Jefferson Highway. And there's that big country club right there. And Brentwood goes down beside the country club and the fence all along there is just broken out in all kinds of spaces. Trees from property have been cut up and hauled off and they have a long, long way to go. And I mentioned, uh, at a previous meeting that we were kind of off schedule, a lot of stuff that we're doing because we've decided that because we had such a generic event and everybody, and you know that the city is not responsible for solid waste collection, but we redirected our people in addition to massaging public rights away. We also picking up stuff that was generated from the storm now. And there's, there's no way we can really differentiate when somebody decides to prune and put stuff out there and what God did. But we're picking up stuff and it's slow. And we just had a meeting today with FEMA. They, they, and we are, uh, Mr. McKee sat in on that meeting and we're trying to see what funds available. Uh, because FEMA is having, uh, input. They're participating with bodies in storm-related events. So, we're hoping that we can get some additional help from them to help us get the debris from the storm removed as well. So, when you see things seem to be moving slowly is because we're really multitasking. We're spreading our small crew even more thinly than, than it normally is. Uh, Ms. Kate King is not here today. We're omitting her report from Metco. We, we turned some of the blowers off, but there's a blower on the wall back there. If you turn that one on back there, I think it will circulate a little bit more air. We, we try to be sensitive because when we have our blowers going too much, they interfere with our sound system. But let's see if we can make that one work without, yeah, okay. Uh, I, last week I was approached by Ms. Glenda Stewart and Ms. Sandra Harris of the American Legion Post Number 51. They wanted to make an inquiry and, and, and talk about a program that they have. And if Ms. Stewart and Ms. Harris are available, uh, present, would you please come up and introduce yourselves? And you may speak to the Mayor and Board of All the Persons of City of Bastrop. We're glad that you're here. And thank you ladies for what you do.
It's been a little bit of change. Sandra couldn't make it here tonight. So, I'm Marsha Cook.
Ms. Cook?
And I am Secretary-Treasure of the American Legion Auxiliary and this is Glenda Stewart. She is our second vice. Uh, what Glenda has come up with is care packages for our troops in Iraq. Uh, what, she's been in contact with a few of them. They're, they're wanting to, uh, get like phone cards, music CDs, beef jerky, um, candy, cookies, stuff like that. And what we have in mind, and with your permission and your support, is to put up posters and stuff like that around town. Uh, ask for donations of, of this type of, uh, items and stuff. And, and then hopefully by the end of November, we'll be able to have enough care packages together that we can ship them out and they'll be, they'll be there for Christmas.
Good, good.
And, uh, of course, we're, we're asking for your all's permission to, to do this and, um, of course, your support. And, you know, and we need the citywide support to do this. We have a lot of our own Louisiana men there and a lot of men that have transferred out of our state but still are in, you know, the military. They have their own people here and everything. And I think this is a real important thing for us to do. I think, uh, the, the troopers would really appreciate it and, um, you know, look good for our city and, and, and everything because we are a friendly town. And, you know, I, we're just here asking for permission.
Members of Board of All the Persons, I asked them to come because I wanted to use the capacity that we have with our live telecast and the replay on the internet to be sure that our public is aware of what they're doing. Uh, because we are live on Channel 7 on cable right now and it'll be on the internet within forty-two, sixty hours from now. Folks can see it. It's gonna be important, ladies, that, that, that you make your list available. And I don't know if you've used a newspaper yet?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things you mentioned is putting posters up. And there are both state and federal and local regulations about where you put the posters.
Okay.
Knowing that this is political season, you can kind of see where the, the candidates put their stuff. So, if you put something in the ground, but you can't use utility poles. And members of staff, Mr. Willie McKee and Ms. Goldman, the folks here will be able to help you
Okay.
know what is legal and what, what is not legal. But we support and encourage those of you in the audience to use your methods to get information available and to, uh, try to, if you need to post something here, let us know. We'll make it available. But again, some of the things you want, you're trying to collect or what now?
Uh, they're like, uh, phone cards, music CDs, candies, cookies, beef jerky. They love homemade cookies, by the way.
Okay.
Uh, postage stamps, postcards, and just a letter, just a little note saying, hey, we're here. We're thinking about you. You know, appreciate what you're doing. Just anything because they, they really look forward. I know you're a military man. You have a, a son that's military. My husband's retired military. And I know when he was over in Vietnam, it was just like, eh, letter day was, you know.
Christmas every day, right?
Yes. And, and, you know, and they're away from their families. It used to been back then a year at a time. I think it's a little bit less now. But still, away from their families and everything. And I just think that they really enjoy hearing, just to, just drop them a postcard. I mean, you know, but, um, just anything.
How, how would you suggest to somebody who wanted to send the postcard or a care package? What, first on, on the, on say food items, candy, cookies, how, how would you suggest that they wrap it up, prepare it or whatever?
Well, it has to be, uh, of course, wrapped where, um, where it's safe, you know. Um, did you get any hints from that on the?
No, they just package it all up at one time, everything, and send a little of everything in each box.
Okay.
That's what we do.
So, so you plan to collect stuff, put it in a box?
Yes.
I see. Okay.
Yeah. Package it up, you know, with plastic and everything. So, couldn't get wet and, you know, or anything, get into it, dust or anything. And then send to different, uh, sections that they have, you know, different, uh, places that they have troopers. And, and just make sure that we send enough at a time. We'll be in contact with, with, um, the military to find out how many is at certain locations and then that, you know, because we don't want to send a few and then not have enough for everybody there. So...
How, how can, how can someone contact you if they want to?
Uh, I can give you Glenda's home phone and, uh, if you have a phone, it's eight seven zero?
Eight seven zero?
Four six zero?
Four six zero?
Zero seven zero four?
Zero seven zero four. That's the cross, that's Arkansas number, right?
Arkansas. Now, I, I'm, I'm in town here and my home phone number is five five six two six six zero. You can call the American Legion, uh, here in, in town. Um...
Two eight one one three one five.
Yeah. Tell her about that.
Thirteen?
Thirteen fifteen.
Okay.
And then my cell phone is three four eight. I, I don't care. I've got unlimited minutes.
I was about to say, do you want to give your cell phone?
Yeah, it don't matter. This is Roy's money. But, um, three four eight five six eight one. Um, you can contact either one of us or anybody at the American Legion and, uh, of course, the, like, the commander and, and, you know, he should know everything about it too. And just anybody that you know or is members of the American Legion or the auxiliary.
Okay. I know we have a lot of faith-based organizations and clubs and other folks who can contact. So, please use this information and, and, and let's appreciate those folks who are serving us.
Thank you.
When do you, when do you plan it? What's, what's your timeframe? What are you planning on?
From right now and, and we're not gonna stop. As long as the merchandise keeps coming in, we're gonna keep sending.
Very good.
As long as they're in there. And, um, I'm sorry.
No, did I hear someone who wants to say time? Ms. Robinson?
Um, we can make up the packets ourselves or just give you, um, you give us a list if we can.
Uh, yeah, it would help us if you, if you did make up the packages yourself, you know.
Or either we can donate to you.
Right. Mm-hmm.
I just want to make sure.
Just, you know, I, I would put everything like, you know, perishable things. I would put it in a plastic bag, you know, and, and the box, of course.
I'll get with you.
Out of, out of all the numbers, I think one of the, I guess, best bits of information to be, would to call the American Legion for sure.
For sure.
If you can't get, if you didn't get in the rest of these numbers, call American Legion Hall, two eight three thirteen fifteen.
Two eight one.
Two eight one. Okay.
Thirteen fifteen.
Okay. Thank you ladies very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hamlin?
You have all your numbers. Where do you drop this material off?
At the American Legion.
At the American Legion.
Oh, I mean, or you can call one of us. We'll come pick it up now.
We're gonna have to call, that's kind of convenient for some people. I thought maybe you had other location where you could drop it off?
Not right at the moment. No, sir. Uh, you know, but like I said, call one of us. We'll make arrangements to come pick it up.
Okay. We, we will offer our services here at City Hall.
Thank you.
If someone wants to bring, uh, items, we'll consolidate it and then get it to you.
Okay. Thoroughly.
Since we're kind of centrally located, Mr. Hamlin, would that work?
Sure.
Okay. We're willing to do that.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much as well. Okay. Okay. Item number nine is introduction of ordinance number 08-4183 and ordinance of the Mayor and Board of All the Persons of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, providing for the licensing and regulations of sexually-oriented businesses, and we'll probably be referring to them as SOBs, and employees and otherwise providing with respect thereto. We are required that whenever we have an ordinance that has penalties to introduce the ordinance which relates to the particular item in one meeting, that ordinance has to lay over, which gives you an opportunity to get input, input from your constituency and to have opportunity to peruse and review it. And then that ordinance is brought back at our next council meeting and is adopted or acted upon. In between that time, there will be a public hearing. And, and discussing with you, your request and use loud public hearing on ordinances will occur thirty to fifteen minutes before our next board meeting. But because there's so much interest in this ordinance, what I, what I probably will do, because, because many of you, many of you want to be a part of the public hearing and have input and discuss and be a part of whatever discussion happens, we will probably call a special call meeting because we have to be sensitive, sensitive to ethics and sunshine regulations where if more than three of you are together, even though you don't transact business, sometime the perception that you're transacting business might be occurring, we'll probably call a special call meeting, if that's what you want to do, before that time to allow public input. But tonight, what we're doing is simply introducing the ordinance. You have copies of it. We have a few copies, Ms. Goldman, available. There are a few copies available. And if, if, if folks want to get copies, they will have, after these run out, we will have to print those and there will be a cost for additional copies because this is a lot of paper. Uh, but at this time, we are introducing ordinance number 08-4183 and ordinance of the Mayor and Board of All the Persons of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, providing for the licensing and regulation of sexually-oriented businesses and employees and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Uh, Ms. Roberts, do you have any comments that you'd like to make about this ordinance or process, anything of that nature?
I have this one. I just want to have this.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Ms. Roberts? And remember, we're simply introducing this at this time. We're not acting on it. But this, based on your request and based on my statements to you in last, last month's council meeting, we have received this information and we were compiling it. So, it has been compiled. Once you review it, peruse it, get input from your constituents of potential changes that you want to make in there, that will be presented between now and that time. Now, if, if you want to set a time for the, the special meeting, you can do that at this time. We have a calendar here. Uh, the next scheduled council meeting will be on November 13th. Now, I'm, this is the court's calendar and I'm, I'm not sure about this. So, we would have to be sure that we worked around the court's schedule. Whatever meeting we have has to be, as, as you know, as we always do, it has to be published. It has to be advertised. And notification has to be given of that meeting.
Mayor Hawkins, uh, time-sensitive issue. Let me direct my question maybe to Ms. Roberts. Uh, if we were able to hold a public hearing before the 13th, would that fall into time constraints recognized by?
Well, first, we, we have to have a meeting, we have to have a meeting before the council meeting that we adopt the item. So, the, the council meeting would need to be next week, week after next, the week after that or whatever. And my, my recommendation to you, if you want to, is to have a, you can, you can do two things. You can have a public meeting where you have public input and that can suffice as the public hearing, as I appreciate it. Mr. McKee, help me with this. Well, that's, I, I don't think, I don't think, well, a public hearing has to be held. So, if you want to have a pub, a public hearing, public meeting with the public participating, that can satisfy the public hearing requirement, which is necessary before you adopt the ordinance. So, your public hearing, public, your public hearing needs to be based on how much time it's gonna take for you to get input and, 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 and review the document so that you would be prepared to vote on, on, on whether or not you want to adopt this, this, this ordinance or not.
Mr. Mayor, we meet on the 13th. What about that week before the 13th?
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Gordon. Is your question regarding the publication, the notice?
Right. That's what I'm...
Okay, that's what I was, generally, you have to have notice. And I don't know if the City of Bastrop has its own notice requirements as far as publication in your local paper. Um, you may require...
Twenty-four hours.
I'm sorry?
Is it twenty-four hours, Ms. Goldman?
It's just twenty-four hours?
It's not. How you just have to do it. You just have to publish it.
We just have to publish it? Yeah. And, and we, we try to publish at least twenty-four hours, at least. And, but, you know, with this, we need to give as much warning as we can, not warning, but as much notice as we can. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
But we, it has to be published in the official journals, which almost makes it be twenty-four hours because we have the...
They like, they like forty-eight hours in advance.
Okay.
Because they have to get it together to make a paper.
Right. Right.
But we would be legal by having it prior to, a week prior to that council meeting where we would vote on it?
Well, I don't, I'm not a...
I'm talking about the public hearing.
Right. I'm not aware of any restrictions that would prohibit you from having your public hearing prior to your meeting? Generally, a public hearing is held on the night of the council meeting when you're gonna vote to actually adopt it or to deny it. Um, I don't know if this, is it the practice or it has been a practice?
It's been practiced. That has been the practice. It's, it's been held thirty minutes to forty-five minutes immediately before, well, an hour, really, because we have it at usually five, thirty-five, fifteen, five, forty-five, something like that.
As long as you meet your notice... As long as you meet your notice requirements, and according to what I'm hearing, generally, it's twenty-four hours, you're, you should be okay.
Okay.
Mayor Hawkins.
Ms. Olive.
I would like to, to make sure that the public has adequate notice to know when we are going to be discussing this, given the magnitude of the interest in this. I do anticipate there will be some changes recommended. So, whatever mediums that we need to utilize, the newspaper, to announce the time, is my request.
Yeah, we're required to use the official journal, which is the newspaper, to give notice of our meetings. That's, we don't have which, an option in that. And we, we will put it on the bulletin board, on the scroll, on the scrolling TV screen as well. And if there are individuals, uh, key individuals in the audience who want to be contacted, we'll be more than happy to notify them as well. So, do you want to set a time now? Do you want us to check with the court first, to see what their schedule is, so we won't conflict?
I think, given the audience that we have, we need to consider setting a time now, and that way, the public will have some idea.
Okay, and my only issue is.
How you gonna set a time now? You don't know what, what the court has scheduled.
And that, that was my, my point, because the facility that we use is this, is this room, and I don't know what the court's schedule is. We don't have the court's schedule for their meetings. Now, we can take a chance. We can take a chance, and set it for six o'clock on a day, and hope that the court is out by that time. Usually they are, but you know, we've had times when we've had meetings, and they were still in. So we, we can take a chance, set it for six o'clock, and, or six-thirty or seven, but they usually go on by seven for sure, and just hope that the, and that the coun, that the court is gone. But, uh, it's, it's up to you. What, what, Ms. Olive, what date do you have in mind?
I don't have a calendar in front of me either. My suggestion would be at least one week.
Okay, what date does that, Ms. Olive?
Today is the ninth. One week from today will be October the sixteenth. Is that an acceptable date?
That's Thursday, that's Thursday of next week.
October sixteenth.
Okay, the sixteenth is a, is a, is a criminal court date for the court. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That's, let me let you see this, and you can work around that.
Okay, how about October the twentieth? That's on a Monday.
Okay, that, that means that we're gonna need to be sure by Wednesday of the week prior, that the newspaper, because paper doesn't publish on Monday, and so it'll need to be, at least be in Saturday's paper, preferably the Friday's paper, okay?
What time?
Twentieth, she's proposing the twentieth of October, is that a good date for everybody?
What time is the date, Mayor?
It's your call. Six-thirty.
Sounds good.
Six-thirty on the twentieth. Let the records show, six-thirty. And to members of the audience, I know that you came because of your interests, and, and your concerns about this, and what we're doing again. We have an ordinance that is proposed. And this ordinance, the title of it, and ordinance of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, providing for the licensing, regulation of sexually oriented businesses and employees, and otherwise providing with respect thereto. The city of Bastrop has not had an ordinance which regulated sexually oriented businesses before. And the city of Bastrop is, is proposing and introducing this ordinance, which will control these businesses. We'll be talking about a couple of other things down here. But this will regulate those businesses. And what we're doing is setting a time for a public hearing, a time at which people will be able to come, and we're gonna, by the way, we're gonna post, Mr., Mr. Floyd? I want to be able to post the ordinance on the internet, is that possible?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna post this document, because it, it's, it, who has, who has a copy of it? It's thick.
I've got it. I've got a couple copies.
Okay, and, and we're gonna, because it's, it's so thick, and everybody, people not gonna, not, not gonna want to pay the cost of, of all the printing, we're gonna post it on the internet, where people can come and get it. We had a few copies over here, and you'll be able to read it there and review it. The council will have copies of it, and if they want to have sessions, or you want to have input with them, and, and before the public hearing, you will be able to come in and discuss it. This ordinance, to some extent, parallels the one that the police jury adopted, which is the, a boilerplate, basically, of the document that municipalities use all over the state. This has been tried and tested with municipalities all over the nation, in fact. It has stood the test of the Supreme Court and everybody else. But this ordinance will regulate those SOBs. Okay, so we're set on that. The second item, which is number ten, is introduction of an ordinance of the mayor and board of all the persons, city of Bastrop, providing for transitory, transitionatory regulations for the zoning of sexually oriented businesses and other, and other providings with, with respect thereto. This, we, we are in the process of creating a land use or zoning for the city of Bastrop. We've contracted with the firm out of Shreveport, and it's a master plan, land use, land regulation, which is comprehensive. And we're getting ahead of them, but we want to adopt an ordinance, and we're introducing this ordinance, because it, it too has penalties. We're introducing this ordinance, which zones the location of SOBs, sexually oriented businesses, in the city of Bastrop. This item has to be introduced, and it can be discussed at the public hearing as well. But it will dictate where sexually oriented businesses can be located. This is official notice that this ordinance too is being introduced at this time. Any questions? Okay, item number eleven. Item number eleven is an item which allows discussion and/or action on the revocation of the occupational license of the business doing business as the Red Door in the city of Bastrop, Louisiana. Mr. Lawrence prepared, uh, a letter, and sent to each of you. Ms. Roberts, and I met with Mr. Lawrence, uh, last week?
Yes, sir.
Last week, to discuss, uh, the discussions that, that you have had before. So we're open for, and, and we talked about what can and cannot be done, what needs to be done if a revocation is to take place. So we, we're open for discussion. Uh, Ms., Ms. Roberts?
Yes, sir.
Before we go into this discussion, would you, we're gonna need to move, unless you feel comfortable, I, I don't know how well you can be heard from, from your seated position, but you might need to go to the podium, or Mr. Floyd might need to move the microphone. I need you to talk to us about the permitting process, and the revocation allowances, or disallowances, or, do you need to stay there? She might need to stay there, Mr. Floyd, because she got her stuff spread all out there. Her papers spread out. Talk, talk to us about the revocation process, please.
Okay, okay, can you hear me?
I, I can. I want to be sure the audience does as well, so Mr. Lawrence will, I mean, Mr. Floyd will help you on that piece.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Regarding the suspension, revocation, or termination of an occupational license.
Hold on just a minute. Okay.
I think we might be getting feedback or something soon.
Okay, is that, is that better?
I hope so.
Okay. As I was saying, regarding the suspension, revocation, or termination of an occupational license, we first of all have to understand that there are certain rules and regulations, including constitutional considerations that we have to keep in mind before we can start to even discuss revoking, suspending, or terminating a person's license. I know, especially with the SOBs, we're talking about a particularly sensitive issue. But that particular issue does not negate the fact that you still have to maintain the same considerations of occupational licenses as you would with, with any other business. You cannot separate, you cannot distinguish, you cannot selectively choose certain businesses, uh, which should be affected by your code dealing with suspensions, revocations, or terminations of occupational licenses. With that said, specifically section thirteen-nine in the Bastrop Code deals with that particular subject, suspension, termination, or revocation of occupational licenses. One thing that is very clear in your code, and that is found in subsection A of that particular section, an occupational license that is issued may be suspended, revoked, or terminated should the city find that the person who has received the license has used the rights or privileges that are granted with that license to engage, or to otherwise aid or facilitate others to engage in criminal activities, or otherwise improper or illegal acts that are prohibited by local municipal, state, federal, or other ordinances and laws. It clearly states that a person can only be revoked, suspended, or terminated if there is a violation of some law. Not because you may feel that it's morally wrong to operate a business, there must be a clear violation of some law, or the engagement, or the furtherance of some criminal or illegal activity. That's the first thing. The second part of that is that there has to be a finding of the city. Just because a prosecutor, or because some other law enforcement agency may find, or allege, let's start with that, may allege that a person has committed an act, that in itself is not enough to deny, revoke, suspend, or an otherwise terminate an occupational license. Your code specifically states that the city's actions are not dependent, and actually it says, shall not be dependent upon the findings or lack thereof of some prosecutor or a court. And the specific language is that the action of the city shall not be dependent on any charge or finding of criminal culpability or guilt, or lack thereof, by a court or prosecuting authority. That simply means the city must act on its own. Now, can you use a finding, it's particularly a finding of guilt, in rendering your decision? You may consider that, but that cannot be the sole basis for your revocation, suspension, or termination of an occupational license. But before you can even get to that point, we have something that's called due process, and that is guaranteed by the state and the federal constitutions. And any deprivation of a person's due process will put the city at risk of possible legal action being taken against you. The way the code is written, the due process notice requirement is pretty much formulated in, 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 it's like three components of the notice. First of all, you have to provide notice to the, the person you are alleging has made some violation regarding their licensing. You have to provide them notice of the charge. Secondly, you have to provide them notice of the date and place of the alleged activity or wrongdoing that you are alleging. And third, you have to provide them notice of any recommended corrective action. Because they're, they even have the right, according to thirteen-nine of the Bastrop Code, they have a right to correct the action that is being alleged to be wrong. Once you provide them with that notice, you then have to give them the opportunity to be heard. And the first step in that is the person is allowed to meet with the mayor, and is given the opportunity to present information, or evidence, or exhibits, or whatever you might want to call it, to the mayor, and he is able to review, and that information in order to determine whether or not that person appears to be in violation, and could possibly have his or her license revoked, suspended, or terminated. Beyond that, if it is requested by the, the, the person who has been alleged to be in violation, if that person desires, that person can then meet with the board of aldermen, with you all, and the mayor, so you all can discuss their issue. And then that point, you all will also have the opportunity to review any document, documentation, or any other evidence or exhibits, which, which may be available to you, in order to make your determination. But before a license can be revoked, versus, or terminated, it has to be done by a majority of the board and the mayor, by a vote. Uh, again, I can't stress this enough, your decision, whether you want to suspend, revoke, or terminate, it has to be based on the law. Any decision you make, based on anything other than the law, to be perfectly honest with you, and blunt with you, it's gonna cause you some problems. So you have to make sure that any action you take is based clearly upon the law that is provided in the Bastrop Code, and if there are any other state provisions regarding the licensing of occupational business, of businesses, you make sure you follow those procedures also. Due process is one of the foundations of this country. And you cannot deprive a person of their, their due process rights, because you feel like it. Any decision you make regarding this issue must be based strictly upon the written word, the law. The letter in the spirit of the law must be applied and followed to the letter, in order to guarantee a person his or her rights, and in order to protect yourselves. So I ask you, and I beg of you, before you make any determinations, or you take any action, that you make sure you have adhered to every corner of the law.
This, this is applicable to, even though this discussion relates to the business doing business as Red Door, this is relative to any?
Yes, sir.
Any occupational license?
Any, any, any business or person who, who has issued an occupational license, this applies to that person, whether it's the Red Door, whether it's, um.
Walmart.
Walmart, Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Mom's Kitchen, or whatever.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, for the sale of liquor.
Ms. Olive?
Thank you, I'm sorry. We have the sixty, forty percent rule. Restaurant sales with liquor. If a business is one hundred percent of its revenues is derived on sexually oriented materials, can we apply that in our decision-making?
Well, according to the way, and I'm looking at what you all have introduced us, in the way of zoning, and regulating the SOBs, I don't see anything in here relative to that. If, if I'm, and I may not be understanding your question. But I, if you're saying that because it sells a hundred percent of the sexually oriented items, and magazines, and this, they're gonna be permitted, you can regulate them. But I don't see anything in what has been, has been introduced to say that you can't sell, your, your business cannot sell only sexually oriented items, or you can sell sixty percent of sexually oriented items, and forty percent of fishing gear. I, I don't see any, any type of regulation in, in that, in that form. Now, is your question, can you do that? Is that your question?
Yes.
Would you? Would you like to propose something like that?
I'm asking.
Well, you can, you can regulate it.
If that's in the ordinance, it will be applicable.
Right.
If it's put in the ordinance.
If it's put in the ordinance, if that's one of the regulations you want to place in it, you have the right to do that. But as, but based on what I've seen currently, that's not in here.
I ask that question because I'm taking into consideration all of the input that I have received from many, many different sources. And one such example would be the cable, the sexually oriented tapes and whatever that's available on that, plus they have other movie channels. Then another issue was brought up about the sale of Viagra in other stores. So that's why I ask that question.
That's medicinal, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, but that's, and that's, well, that's a different, that's a different issue because you're talking about prescriptive medications and things like that. So that would be federal violations. Because you can only, as far as I know, you can only buy that type, that type of medication through prescription.
And I say that because I'm trying to include things that I have, conversations that I have had.
What you can do is, and you can, and it's really advised that you do this, that you narrowly tailor your ordinances. And because you don't want them overly broad, you want them narrowly tailored to cover specific issues. And I know you're not, you can't cover everything. But you want to write these and tailor these in such a way that you encompass the overall goal that you desire, and at the same time, you're protecting not only the citizens of the city, but you're also protecting the business owners. Because the business owners have rights too.
We open for discussion? So basically, I think a couple of things need to be. I think the business owner was charged by the Sheriff's Department, and material was confiscated. I don't know what the charges were, maybe it was obscene material. But as I appreciate that this has not gone before a court, and there's been no decision made, is anybody aware of anything like that? Yeah. So the business is open. The business is, is open for business. I went by there today because I wanted to see what the status was. When I got into my car and started the door, the lady asked me for my ID, and the business is open. The back room is taped off because there's nothing back there. I don't know if that was a material that was confiscated or not, but they have items on the wall and, you know, on the display stands and things of that nature. I didn't go for inspection, I went to talk to the owner today because I wanted to inform her of this meeting tonight and the discussions that would be, would be held. One fact is established, and I think we talked about this in the Finance Committee, and you are aware of this as well. Whatever ordinance that we adopt does not eliminate the Red Door. And Ms. Roberts, and help me stay up with this, with, I know in our liquor, Chief Walker, in our liquor ordinance is, if a business is discontinued for, what, six months? If a business is discontinued, is that universally applicable? If a business is discontinued for six months, fails to operate for six months, and in the Red Door's case, if they close for six months and they, they can't, they have to go through a new process. But as long as they're continuously in operation, they are there. So the Red Door, and help me with this, even if we adopt this ordinance, if this ordinance is adopted, the Red Door is basically grandfathered, or do they come under the new ordinance?
Right, because the Red Door is already in existence at the time that this ordinance, assuming that the ordinance passes. Because the Red Door is already in existence, it would be grandfathered in. This ordinance would not have a retroactive effect. It would be prospective. So any other entity or business, such as the Red Door, like the Red Door, which may want to open after the passage of this ordinance, they would have to comply with what is included in your adopted ordinance. Now, there is a section in your ordinance dealing with non-conforming businesses.
Is this the proposed ordinance?
Right, that's in the proposed ordinance, that's in?
And it's non-conforming?
Right, it's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Dealing with non-conforming sexually oriented business uses. Now, if you have some, some of these types of businesses that are in effect as of the date of the passage of your ordinance, based on what's written in the proposed ordinance, it states that a non-conforming sexually oriented business existing prior to November thirteenth, two thousand eight, may continue to operate for three years following that date in order to make a reasonable recoupment of his investment in his current location. And that means they've got until November thirteenth, two thousand eleven. And as of two thousand eleven, the use will no longer be recognized as illegal, non-conforming.
What does that mean?
Well, basically what that means is, and if you've got a business, and once you pass your ordinance, say for instance, you've got certain structural requirements. If the Red Door, which is currently in existence, if the Red Door does not meet the structural requirements, then the Red Door has three years to get into compliance. If he doesn't, if it doesn't come into compliance in three years, he's, he can apply, the owner can apply for up to two six-month extensions within which to come into compliance. So you can't, you can't stop the Red Door from opening, let me clarify that. But if you have any other restrictions or requirements that you place on these types of businesses, then the Red Door will have to comply. And if it doesn't, then, or if it can't do it, they can actually apply for a hardship application. And with that extension, the city can decide, and by this time, you may have a planning commission since you're going to have your zoning in place. Your planning commission then could determine whether or not the hardship requirements are met, and they can be given an extension of time. But the bottom line is, you cannot stop it from operating. But you can only require that it come into compliance with other requirements that you all may establish in your ordinance.
How much more stringent can, can regulations be on an SOB versus a regular business?
Well, first of all, you gotta be careful because when you're talking about SOBs because of the types of materials that are sold there, like magazines and things like that, you're talking about a person's right to free speech. It's a First Amendment right that's guaranteed by the Constitution. So you've got to be careful regarding your regulation of these types of businesses. As long as you, and what the courts generally look at is whether or not the health, welfare, and safety of the public are in any way in danger because of the existence of the business.
One of the things which allows, as I appreciate it, sexual oriented businesses to be regulated is the secondary effect.
Right.
Because in doing the research and helping compile this, I found that individuals who work there can be required to have a license as well, and they have to pass a test, kind of like the same thing, true Chief Walker, with folks who work in liquor stores. Yeah, they have to be of age, they cannot have had felonies, cannot have had convictions and things of that nature. So that goes a long ways in regulating who works there.
Exactly, 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 exactly. And it's really a protective device, and that's why it goes back to what I was saying earlier. You look at the safety, welfare, and health of the community. And as long as those measures are considered and there has, there's not been a violation of those, then you're generally okay. But yeah, there are several safeguards that are placed, that are, that have been put in place already regarding the regulation of these types of businesses. And any ordinances which are passed by municipalities would just be in furtherance of those safeguards that are already in place.
From your experience, and I think when we talked, I asked you about your experiences in the City of Monroe and whether SOBs apply for licenses during your tenure there. As I can appreciate it, the courts in making determinations, and evidently what the Red Door sells in Washita Parish, and what the Triple X Superstore sells in Washita Parish, what Spencer's in the mall sells, and Underground sell, as I appreciate it, they're two categories, two definitions, or two labels applied to pornographic or obscene material.
Two, like different levels.
Hardcore, hardcore and softcore porn.
Right.
And softcore pornographic material evidently is allowed versus the hardcore. And if, if the City of Bastrok gets to the point that we have to have hearings on determining revocation, is there a clear-cut definition of what softcore porn and what obscenity is that this board of all the persons will be able to use in that?
Well, what you can do, and just remember too, even though, even if you adopt your ordinance next month, you can always amend it. So if you need to, and you can find definitions, different municipal organizations, case law would even provide definitions, if you need definitions of hardcore porn as opposed to soft. And you can then implement those definitions into your ordinance. You have the right to do that. Because you do, and it goes back to what I was telling you, you want it narrowly tailored. You want to be able to have a clear understanding of what is and is not allowed. And you have to have adequate guidelines within which you can work in order to enforce your ordinances.
Can, can community values be used in determination? I think you said that before, but community values.
You know, it's, the law is the law. And you can't make your decisions based on the way you feel, on, you know, what you believe is moral and is not moral or immoral. Because morals change from individual to individual. So the best way to handle any situation, whether it's the Red Door or any other business dealing with an occupational license, you deal strictly with what is written on the books. I understand, we're all human, emotions get involved. We all have our own ideals of morality and immorality. But as long as you stay within the confines of the law, you're going to be protected. Do we tend to, do we sometimes write our laws based on some of the values that we have? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Some of, your ordinances are written in such a way that what's expected in the City of Bastrok is then presented in your ordinances. And it is based on the way you want your city to be run. But the foundation of your ordinances must be based on what is allowed by already existing law, what is required by the Constitution, what is required by other regulatory provisions or policies. But your ordinance must have a foundation of being embedded and grounded in law. That must be the basis.
I have questions.
Ms. Robinson?
If you can't use your, excuse me. If you can't use your values, then why, when we're reading about all this, is there, is, once, that this type of business is in your community, it's been proven that vapes go up, the narrow diseases get to be more.
Yep.
And there are a lot of other things because of that business that affects all of our values.
Well, that's why you can regulate those. Now, do you have actual proof and documentation of these? Do you have statistics? Or is this, and this goes back to what I was saying, or is it based simply on people's perceptions of what happens?
This is, apparently it's been data that's been proven because it's in some of the information that we've gotten.
And that goes back to what I was saying. It's what you have to look at as the Board of Aldermen is what is good for the safety, the health, and welfare of the City of Bastrok. Your ordinances must reflect that. But all I'm saying to you is, your ordinances cannot be based primarily on your feelings. Your decisions cannot be based primarily on what you believe is immoral. If your Bastrok Code allows for giving occupational licenses for a business such as the Red Door, you have to issue it. You have no basis, you would have no basis for denying it. There, you would not have a legal leg to stand on just to arbitrarily deny or to arbitrarily revoke a person's license. It's as if, it's, for instance, if you were a business owner, and you decided you just, you wanted to sell ducks, you happen to be in a zone, once you all get zoning, you're in a business zone. It's allowed, you're allowed to sell ducks, but because your next-door neighbor doesn't like ducks, he or she cannot stop you. You would not think that person would have the right to stop you from selling your ducks simply because he doesn't like them. And that is no different from an SOB. A person may not, we've got people who think it's wrong for you to eat meat. But then, on the other hand, you have people who think that's, you know, it's okay. So you're dealing with the same basic issue. It's just that we tend to become more emotional because it's an SOB as opposed to deciding whether you're going to eat chicken and be, you know, and not be a vegetarian.
I think it goes a little bit deeper than that.
Well, no, it's basically, and I understand, I'm not trying to minimize it, but the comparisons are pretty much the same. Because on one hand, you have someone who's saying that it's moral, it's immoral. And on the other hand, you have someone saying it's moral. And that's why I say, as long as you stay within the black letter of the law and you make your decisions based on the letter of the law, you are protected as a member of the Board of Aldermen, and the citizens of Bastrok are also protected.
I think there'd be a difference in opinion there.
I'd like to say something.
Ms. Oliver?
I don't want to dominate the timeframe. And I have a charge to keep. And I look out in the audience, and I know it has taken a lot of effort to come together as a community and represent your wishes. I have received many, many phone calls in reference to the operation of a sexually oriented business. The business is operating in my district. And I've listened carefully to your legal advice, and I've taken everything under consideration. I respect the wishes of the community. And if I must err, I would rather err on the side of what is healthy for a community. There are two schools. There are two schools in my district, a daycare center, and certainly the location of this business is at the gateway into the community. And in listening to everything that I have heard, I want to ask this council to take whatever measures within our legal constraints to have this business relocated to another area.
Any other comments?
I think.
Okay, but we're going to have comments from the audience. I want to be sure I'll get the board, all the persons' comments first.
Do you have any suggestions?
One, may I respond?
Please, Ms. Roberts.
With that recommendation, you are going to be placing an undue burden, or it could be perceived as an undue burden, economic burden, on the business owner in order to relocate the business. Those are just some considerations that I'm telling you, you've got to consider. And I understand your position, but there are other considerations that you have to keep in mind. When you start talking about excessive expenses that you're going to place on someone, and remember this too, you don't have an ordinance in place now to regulate these. So for you now to say you want this business to move, what could be deemed an arbitrary decision, and on top of that, you're placing an undue burden on that business owner, what you have to ask yourself is, am I singling out this one business? Is the consideration that you're making regarding the Red Door the same consideration that you would make and suggest with any other business that happens to be located in your district in that particular area? in your district in that particular area? You have to treat, you have to treat the businesses the same, but the one thing you have to remember is that you currently do not have any type of ordinance, any type of zoning ordinance, to regulate the Red Door.
Ms. Roberts, I appreciate your legal advice and certainly respect it. I know I'm not an attorney, but within my tenure as a council member, I had a arcade supposedly that was operating under the guise of something else going on in my community, and I had to uphold the standard of the community. So I respect what you have said, and again, I ask this council to take under consideration the constraints, the legal constraints that we're faced with and to have this business relocated to another area.
Okay. Any other comments from the board before we hear from members of the audience on this issue?
I'd like to ask Ms. Olive.
Ms. Robinson?
Do you have any suggestion?
Speak up, speak up so everybody can hear you.
Do you have any suggestion as to where you'd like for it to be moved to?
I do not, but I base what I'm saying on the fact that I have two schools of daycare center located in my district, and I am respecting the wishes of the outcry from the community. No, I do not, Mrs. Roberts. And in all due respect, I have to also say that I have received only two calls in reference to the business remaining where it is. But I have a whole list of people who have called me in reference to having it relocated. So I'm trying to operate within another constraint. We can't revoke the license because of their rights, so that's why I said relocate the business to somewhere else.
And I have to agree with Ms. Olive. I also have had lots of phone calls, and I think it's an abomination to our community to have it here in the first place.
Okay. Any other comments from the Board of Alderman? I think Brother Adams, is that you? I recognize back there. Would you come forward, please? And if you'll identify us, give us your name and your address, and then you may speak to the mayor and board of all the persons.
Mayor, you said last meeting that you were disappointed, that there were not more of the Christian community that turned out. And I want you to see tonight, as you look at our audiences, as maybe even the cameras look at our audience, you'll see that there not be a disappointment tonight.
I appreciate people speaking up by their presence, but this really shows interest. Thank you very much.
The, I'm sorry, the issues that I have go along, and Ms. Roberts, I really appreciate you saying, as long as they follow the letter of the law. I really appreciate that because according to the city code, as it is written and as you quoted, that as long as the city finds, the city discovers, that is a discovery, once the city discovers a law that this business violates, then the city is, has complete right to revoke, suspend or terminate the license. Now, the section that I refer to comes out of 13-9, and as I get my materials together, the, the suspension and revocation of the occupational license that is issued to any person may be suspended, revoked or terminated should the city find that the person so licensed has used the rights or privileges afforded by the occupational license to engage in or otherwise aid, abet or facilitate others to engage in criminal or otherwise improper or illegal acts that are prohibited by local, municipal, state or federal laws and ordinances. Ladies and gentlemen of all the persons, I present to you ordinance number 1281 of the local law, Morehouse Parish law. That is the local finding. The local finding, of course, does not keep this business from operating, but the local finding of this law gives that a sexually-oriented business has locational requirements under the local law. The local law states that no sexually-oriented business shall be operated within 2,500 feet of a public park or public library, a nonprofit educational museum, a church or synagogue, a public or private elementary or secondary school, a daycare center or kindergarten, another sexually-oriented business, or a structure that contains a sexually-oriented business. That no sexually-oriented business shall be operated within 2,500 feet of a residential zoning district or any lot dedicated or devoted to residential use. The measurement standard is given under that, that the measurement standard shall be made in a straight line without regard to intervening structures or objects from the nearest portion of the structure where the sexually-oriented business is located or conducted to the nearest property line of the premises of a church, public park, public or private elementary or secondary school, daycare or kindergarten, residential district or building site dedicated or devoted to a residential use. Mayor and Board of Alderman, I contracted with Messenger and Associates to have a 2,500 straight-line measurement made from the Red Door. As this board may see, Oak Hill Elementary School is 1,935 feet from a standard of measurement from the Red Door building to the corner of Oak Hill Elementary School. That falls within the local law as provided by, by the Bastrop Code.
Let me ask you a question. Is that the Bastrop Code or is that some Morehouse Parish?
This is the Bastrop Code. The Bastrop Code allows for any illegal act that is prohibited by a local, municipal, state or federal law. Morehouse Parish law is our local law.
Pastor, and this is not a debate, but the city of Bastrop is an incorporated entity which operates on its own charter, and this is where Ms. Roberts is going. Even though that is a parish law, the city of Bastrop was separately incorporated, as is Marouge, Bonita, Collinston and O'Grady, so, and I appreciate what you're saying. The parish government is the lowest level of parochial government, but because the city of Bastrop operates under a separate charter, that separates those laws.
Then, Mayor, why is the local law given to exist in the Bastrop Code? If we're not going to uphold it, it shouldn't be listed.
I'm not going to debate you, sir.
Well, and, Mayor, let me say, this is a quote from you from the last meeting. "One of the things I did when I took office was to uphold the laws of the United States of America, the laws of the state of Louisiana and the ordinance of the city of Bastrop. I took an oath to do that, whether I agree with the laws or not. I took an oath and I take my oath seriously."
I did say that, sir.
Mayor, this is the law. According to my attorney, Travis Holly. He writes to the mayor and the board of all the persons, Honorable Clarence W. Hawkins, Mayor, honorable members of the city council, dear mayor and city council members, much like Mr. Lawrence, due to an unfortunate conflict, I am required to be in Shreveport on Thursday, October the 9th, and therefore will be unable to be present for this important meeting. Let me get to the point and tell you that I have carefully reviewed the video portion of the meeting where the mayor and city council discussed the granting of the business license to the Red Door, September 11th meeting. I urge each of you to review the transcript of the tape as it clearly shows that what happened at that meeting and your conduct at that meeting carries with it legal ramifications.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. The Board of Alderman is represented by counsel, and just my legal opinion based on this letter is that it is inappropriate for legal counsel, your legal counsel, to direct this board outside, outside of and away from their legal counsel. And, and, do you have any...
Sure.
And it would, it appears to be, it would have been more appropriate.
Can't be your attorney.
It appears it would have been more appropriate.
Would you step to the podium and use that mic, please? Excuse me.
Can you hear me? It appears it would be more appropriate for Mr. Holly as your legal counsel to direct any concerns he would have directly to Mr. Lawrence as opposed to directing his concerns to the Board of Alderman, who are represented by Mr. Lawrence. I know this is not a courtroom and I can't make an objection or anything, but I need to state for the record that it is, it appears to be an inappropriate communication between an attorney and another attorney's client.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Again, we're not in accord, and this is my, this is the council.
Well, I think it's because I've scanned the letter and Mr. Holly provides attempts to advise the Board of Alderman against the advice of their attorney. And so any, any, any argument or disagreement between Mr. Holly and Mr. Lawrence should be addressed, between Mr. Holly and Mr. Lawrence and not Mr. Holly and Mr. Lawrence's clients.
The, I appreciate your opinion. It is at this point that a questionable meeting occurred between the members of the city council, Mr. Doug Lawrence.
First, members of the Board of Alderman, do you understand what Ms. Roberts just said?
I do.
Do all the, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Olive?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Lenore?
Right.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Okay.
The, subsequent to the off-camera discussion...
With that in mind, do you want to consider this without Mr. Lawrence's advice?
I don't believe I do, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor, I do want to inform the city council that the, within that one-mile radius of the Red Door, you have 14 convicted sexual offenders. If you take that to a two-mile radius, you have 28 sexual offenders. Board of Alderman, I believe that you have the legal right, if you read the letter that is presented to you, and I would hope that you would read it in its entirety, that you would see that not only you have the legal right, but you have a legal mandate to stand on the law, and I encourage you to do so.
For the record, sir, would you give your name and address?
My name is Reverend Cal Adams. I reside at 1102 Apollo Circle in the city of Bastrop, Louisiana.
And my reason for doing that is not to, not to, this is not a picking, but in our, in our minutes, we list who speaks to us and give pertinent information. Thank you, sir. Okay, sir?
My name is Jim Ingram. I'm pastor of First Baptist Church here in Bastrop, and I'm also the moderator for the Morehouse Baptist Association. I do take exception that law leaves out moral convictions. We wouldn't have ordinances that regulate liquor sales nor obscene or pornographic materials if there were not some values that were attached to it. But Mayor and city council members, I would like to read a statement that was made, a resolution that was passed at our annual associational meeting, and let me just read that to you if I may.
Please.
The Morehouse Parish Baptist Association met for its 84th annual meeting on October 6, 2008, and I have, let me give you a copy so that you follow along.
We should give a copy to the clerk so we can make it a part of our records, please. Thank you, sir. Oh, shoot, that's fine, no problem. Here's his one.
The Morehouse Parish Baptist Association met for its 84th annual meeting on October 6, 2008 at First Baptist Church for the purpose of conducting business. This association of churches seated messengers representing 24 Southern Baptist churches located in Morehouse Parish and in Bastrop, if I might add, with a total of, total membership of 7,197, which is no small grouping of people in our parish. The following resolution was presented, discussed and voted upon by messengers and was passed by an overwhelming majority vote. Whereas our churches are united in the opposition of the sale and distribution of pornographic materials, including soft or hardcore pornography, because of the consequences it brings to the people in the community that allow it to exist. I'm a professional in the ministry, and I have seen the problems that addiction to pornography creates. Now, that is a moral statement, it is a statement of my personal values plus the values that are represented among 7,197 of the members of this Baptist congregation and denomination in this parish. Whereas our churches base our opposition to pornography upon the teaching of the Bible, which warns us of sexual immorality and that which promotes or encourages sexual immorality. Be it resolved that we are opposed to the operation of the Red Door because of the violation of these biblical principles, be it further resolved that we appeal to those who are our elected officials to revoke, suspend or terminate the occupational license of the Red Door because of its violation of the obscenity laws of the state of Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, we're still in discussion mode, ladies and gentlemen. What is your, what is your pleasure? Is there action that you wish to take at this time?
Mayor, I believe I made a recommendation.
Is that a motion, Mrs. Olive?
Yes, sir, that's a motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that the occupational license of the Red Door be revoked.
No, 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 sir, I did not say revoke. I said relocate the business based on the legal constraints that have been presented to us.
Okay, before then, we make that motion, is there any, either one of you council members that are willing to take it in your district? And I'm not being facetious, but if, if Ms. Olive doesn't want it in her district, then that means that one of you, if you vote to remove it, that means that you're accepting it in yours.
No.
I mean, the only, only purview that we have, the only authority we have is in the city of Bastrop. So if you vote to approve Ms., and I'm not playing games with you, but that's really what's happening. If you, and not playing games, but that's what, her motion is that it be removed from its location. So it's removed from her location in District B, that means that one of you would be willing to accept it in your district because you don't have a prerogative to put it anywhere else. Her motion is, use the legal means necessary. Now, Ms. Roberts has told us that we don't have any legal means to do stuff, but if you approve her motion, somebody's going to have to take it. So after that motion, then the motion's going to be made as to who's going, where it's going to move to.
Well, Mayor, would you like to have it in your district?
My district is the city of Bastrop.
Well, at least it'd be out of...
Okay, so Ms. Olive has a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I think I seconded it.
Okay, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no.
No.
Roll call.
Ms. Robinson?
No. Yes.
Yes.
Please, I appreciate your support, but please let us go to our roll call.
Mr. Gordon?
No.
Oh, no, we, well, we need to start because we went over there.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Olive?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
No.
Mr. Lenore?
No.
Mr. Hamlin?
No.
The motion fails. Okay, we're going to move on to our agenda then. Item number 12 is discussion, and I'm going to table item number 12. This is on the personnel policy. We need to have committee meetings to go more into detail. You have the draft of that document, and we need to deal with that at another time. So with your permission, we will set another meeting, a special committee of the whole in order to deal with the personnel policy. Item number 13 is action on condemnation bids. Ms. Goldman, you might give a little background on our funding for that as well?
Okay.
Okay, we received through the state some grant money-
Let's pause for a minute, because we have movement. If, if, we'll wait. Okay, Ms. Goldman, thank you.
We received a grant for, through the state, and it's to help us with our problems of our condemnation. We've got several properties that, for one reason or another, is, just needs to be tore down. So, we've got about, just a little under forty thousand, and we've applied for some more, so hopefully, before it's over, we'll get some additional funding. We tried to burn down the, different properties that were able for the fire department to burn. It's a double foe, they get the training, and it's cheaper for us to, to burn them rather than hire a contractor. So we, we've done some of those, and we've got a few more that we need to do, but it come, it's time for us to bid out the condemnations and get a contractor to the ones that we cannot burn. So we had twenty-five different property. Some is, belong to the city of Bastrop that we acquired in one way or another. We're gonna tear, clean those up first. And the other twenty-two are ready to proceed. So as money is available, we're gonna tear those down, and hopefully, we can get the properties sold and back on the tax road.
And we, we have to, we have to expend the money that we have in the grant now before we can get access to other money, right?
That's right. We need to spend the, around thirty-seven thousand now, before we can get the forty, and they're, they're hoping, because of the hurricane, they were really hoping to go ahead and award that, but that didn't happen, so maybe in the next couple of months, we'll, we'll be hearing from them. And we ask for fifty thousand this next time. I don't know if we'll get, you don't usually get what you ask for, but we, we asked for it. But we, we proceeded with the beds, and we, we received two beds. One of the businesses did not properly submit their bed. So I recommend that we, we not accept that bed, but we accept the bed of specialty logistics.
Okay. Of, of the two bidders, one didn't meet the criteria, they didn't, they didn't-
No, sir, they-
...submit documentation-
Right. They didn't have the certificate of insurance that we require them to have.
So it was disqualified.
Their process had some changes and it wasn't initial. It, it was several criterias that they just didn't meet.
So basically, one of the bids was disqualified because it didn't meet the criteria?
That's right.
Okay. And the, the remaining bid did meet the criteria?
That's correct.
And what was the amount of that?
Well, the, the whole total, I don't have the total, but y'all have a breakdown sheets of the resident, of the occupational, I mean, the, the sites itself, I should say. And since we, I must say this too, since we advertised a bid, two owners had already cleaned up their property. They had begun to kinda work on it, but we didn't omit those, because sometimes business owner starts and they don't complete it, and then if you admit it from the bid, you gotta start all over. But we have, I'll go ahead and read those out for, for the record. It's 120 Haney, five thousand four hundred and forty-eight. 327 West Cypress, eight thousand four ninety-eight. The corner of Wilson and Arant, eight thousand six eleven. 606 Eldridge, five thousand six hundred and forty-three. 905 M, eight thousand two hundred and twenty-three. 1311 Henry, eight thousand four hundred. 912 Charles, eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-two. 808 Eldridge, four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. 1109 North Odom, eight thousand one hundred and eight. One, 1119 Daisy, that trailer was removed and the property's cleaned up. 309 Oliver, seven thousand ninety-eight dollars. 312 Martin Luther King South, three thousand eight seventy-six. 1611 Lee, five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five. 423 Commerce, seven thousand seven hundred and sixty. 421 Commerce, seven thousand two hundred and ninety-six. Two, one hundred and six, a hundred, one sixty-two Parker, seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven. 704 Wade, nine thousand three hundred and seven. 419 Falls, seven thousand two hundred and eighty-six. 1110 Carey, eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two. 532 Harrington, eleven thousand five hundred and eighteen. 314 Burke Street, eight thousand two hundred and twenty-three. 506 Jackson, sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four. 1317 Lee, seven thousand three oh one. 542 Haynes, that house was moved and complete, looks really good. And 916 Reef Street, four thousand five hundred and fifty-six. What we're hoping to do is, is, we're, use the money we have now, and hopefully, before this, this is over with, we'll receive word on the other, and we'll just continue on down the line as, and we'll do as many houses as we can with the money that we, we get.
Now, the, the specifications for this is not only is the house to be torn down, but the lot is to be left in, in manageable condition.
That's right. It should be, our building inspection department will oversee this project. We ask that they leave it where we, somebody can go in and mow it, and we won't have this problem again. It's-
Do, do we, do we know, or do they have to show us where they're hauling the refuse?
Yes. That's part of the bids, we don't have a landfill here. So we put in the specs that they had to haul it to a, a official certified approved dump site, and they have to provide us with tickets, show, show and prove that they've hauled it there.
Okay, very good. Mr. Gordon?
Mayor Hawkins, I don't know if this question would be directed to Ms. Goldman or to whom. Why was 532 Harrington and 506 Jackson Street so much more significant than the rest of these properties? Is there specifics to that property?
There is specifics. There, it's possible they have asbestos, so that's gonna really cost. And that didn't mean we would get to do it, but we, we went ahead and bid all twenty-five, 'cause it's been years since we've, we've done this, and with the economy, we just really didn't have a, even a starting point as to what, what it would cost us. So we just went ahead and did all twenty-five. Five, and if we don't get the money, or we don't, it'll give us some kinda basis when we bid the next time, maybe a ballpark figure, it depends on how much fuel and all that goes up, but at least we'll have some kinda idea. Now, if, if, if it's proved that it is asbestos, it, one house may take a whole grant to do just one house, you know, I just-
We're gonna cherry pick these, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna pick the ones that make our money go, go the greatest distance. Mr. Lenore?
I just, can you give me a list of those that are in District D, or I-
Well, you should have it in your packet. It's item number seven. You have all that, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah.
If you don't, I'll be sure that you get it.
Mr. Hamlin?
Let's go.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All the houses in the position where they can't be burned?
Well, when Tanya was here, she, she went through, through this. Now, since the bids come out, they think there may be one or two, and if that's the case, and they find out, yes, the fire department can't, we, we will not, we will let them burn it, and then we can use, if it's something that we've gotta haul off, through a dumpster, we can use the grant money to pay for the dumpster, 'cause sometimes they can't burn everything, you know, in a house.
I know, but it just appeared to me that if, if we can burn the biggest of it, it'll be cheaper to-
Right.
-to, to remove what's left.
Yes, sir.
Part of, part of her criteria in selecting properties, and, and the fire department has a list of, of properties, they analyze and try to discern the ones that can be burned, and, and the ones that can be burned to determine that, by their proximity to other houses and traffic and power lines and things of that nature. So, Mr. Hamlin, unless some things have changed, it's kind of, kind of established that these are the ones that can't be burned.
They can't be burned.
Can't be burned, yes. Okay. Does someone else have a question about these? Okay, so we-
I have.
Ms. Robinson?
Where is specialty logistics from?
They are out of Monroe.
The, the list of, the list of vendors here are the ones who picked up packets?
Yes, sir.
All of these folks that you see being being out?
They either picked up or requested to mail.
And that was the only one that responded?
Two.
We had two.
Two responded. M and H was the one that was disqualified, because they didn't, and, and you see a footnote at the bottom, the reasons that that bid was disqualified.
You need a motion, Mayor?
Please.
I'll make a motion to grant a bid on, to specialty logistics.
Mr. Gordon makes a motion?
I second it.
Ms. Robinson seconds this motion, is in the discussion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Mr. Walker, is, do we have any legal license applications?
We have no applications.
Very good, thank you. Is there any other business that would be brought before this, we have, we're gonna, I need a motion to expand the agenda for the listed items, I'm sorry.
I, I, I have a question from my constituents in my district.
Okay.
They wanted to know what remedy does the city have for eleven-eighths squirrels? And, and if the city, if the city does not have any remedy, what, what magic can they take as an individual? And I don't want people laughing, this is a problem.
Serious problem, isn't it?
My constituents.
Yes, constituents?
Yes, sir.
A citizen, property, elite legitimate property owning citizen has their problem.
Yes, sir.
One, one of the things, Mr. Walker, what is, what is, because we are separate incorporated entity, and even though the parish allows gunshots and shooting, in the city of Bastrop, can we discharge firearms?
Oh, no, sir.
So we can't shoot them? With the, with the, with the, a powder kind of gun, whatever, Mr. McKee is my technical hunting official, but with the-
They could shoot it with a BB gun, but I don't think it'd kill it.
BB gun, pellet gun, air rifle, that kinda thing.
They can't go on someone else's property that's got-
Okay. Now, he, help me with this. Are squirrels considered nuisance animals, but based on category? 'Cause we have some categories of nuisance animals, I believe, and I, I don't know if-
Mayor, while she's looking that way-
Ms. Robinson, speak up so they can hear you now.
If anybody would like to borrow a trap, what we do is trap hours in our yard and take them up to our camp at Beadman, let them out, so that if you could do that, that's a-
One solution.
-humane way to do it, just take them out, and if you've got a hunting club or whatever, let them loose out there.
You have traps that are available? You have a trap?
Well, we've got a, a couple, yes.
Okay, Ms. Robinson has a trap.
The other question is, that the city has a grant that compensates them for their loss. They're losing their-
Oh, the, the damage caused by the squirrel?
Yeah, they're, they're losing their, their, their meaning of survival, their, their fruit, their pecans, their pears, what else I got?
The citizen, the citizen, well, there's, the citizen there?
It's a citizen.
So, so, now, I think that's, that's probably gonna be on the act of God, Mr. Hamlin. And I'm not being, I'm not being invasive, but-
But the city has the regulations where there'd be strength on the property owner.
But see, you're talking about public property?
No, we're talking about private property.
Okay, you're talking about private property, but private property, it'll be up to the property owner to regulate that, and for the city to be careful what you're asking for, because if on your private property, you want the city to come in and pay for damages to your property, then you're opening the door for the city to come in and regulate your private property on other issues.
They're regulating it now.
But, seriously speaking, though, I'm, I'm looking at the nuisance portion of the code, I just got to, and I'm looking at, would consider the nuisance is never declaring nuisance a source of guilt or cause, or power call sickness, that, that shall be filed by the city to exist on any private or public property, which affects the health of the residents, is it affecting the health of the residents?
It, it affected them because eliminating the, the, the means of providing food going to take-
Let, let me, let me ask, let me ask, because this is, this is a serious situation. Let us do some, some research, because when, whenever there has been, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not being, being specific, but whenever we've had nuisance animals, rats, snakes, other kinds of animals that, that are causing problems, we exercise, exercise the authority to do things, so, Mr. Hamlin, if you would give us the opportunity to investigate to see if there are ways, 'cause when, we've had people with bees. Bees have, have been, have, have infiltrated people's property, and we don't have the capacity, but we've helped folks get bees out of their houses. So, when there's been a vicious animals or poor mosquitoes-
Right, and that's why I was, and that's why I was getting at. I'm not saying that the city can't help you, but the city is not solely responsible for helping to get rid of the squirrels or to, to try and control them in some way.
We might need to check to see if they have rabies or something, too, don't we?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's, that's the health aspect I was, I was mentioning. Because it could cause diseases and other health issues, so you would have to be careful.
Let, let us investigate, Mr. Hamlin, for, for the citizens in your district, and let's see what we can find out.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, I need a motion to expand the agenda for a couple of items, and specifically those items on the expanded, first, is there another citizen who'd like to have a comment to this Mayor and Board of Alderpersons before we go into our expanded agenda? Okay, I need a motion to expand it. Would you come forth, please? Thank you. If you'll identify yourself, give us your name and address, and you may speak to this Mayor and Board of Alderpersons.
My name is Brooke Mullin. I live at 9776 Bledsoe Lane, Bastrop, Louisiana.
What was that address again?
9776 Bledsoe Lane.
Bledsoe Lane, okay. Thank you.
And I would just like to say, I mean, I respect everybody's decision and what they do, and I know y'all say that y'all haven't had many people call about it, and that's because everybody is looking down on people that want to go in the store. I mean, I know I wouldn't wanna call, because everybody that comes to, you know, events like this, I'm, I'm not used to coming here, and that's not saying that I'm not a Christian or I'm a bad person, but, I mean, I just don't, because I know people look down on other people for doing something, and that's not their place. And I think it is, I think everybody should be judged by one person, not by a town, for what they do, in their own private time. That's my belief, everybody has one, and I believe that somebody with the same beliefs as me should be heard too. And I, I understand the laws. I'm, I'm not saying, you know, that I don't want y'all to do anything, I mean, if, if y'all feel that something needs to be done about it, for children's sake, because I am a mother, then, then that's what needs to be done, but there is somebody in the, in Bastrop selling the same things we are, and he is a convicted child molester, that I believe needs to be dealt with before anything else.
Thank you very much.
And I thank y'all for hearing me.
We really appreciate you for coming and speaking your mind, because this is a public forum, and you have the right to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Now, but is there, is there a motion to expand the agenda for these items?
I'll make a motion, may I expand the agenda?
Mr. Lenore makes the motion?
I'll second.
The Hamlins and Ms. Olive jointly second that motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you say no, the ayes have it. Those opposed should say no. The ayes have it. Resolution number zero eight twelve fifty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the state of Louisiana for Main Street, Street and Historic Center. Uh, this, it, just, this is what we do every, every year to get the funding, get the money, right?
That's right.
Okay. In order to get the seventy-five thousand dollars that Mark talked about earlier, we have to adopt a resolution, which you are saying that you are in favor and are willing to accept that money. If you don't adopt a resolution, the money will go to somebody else.
I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution.
That was quick. Mr. Gordon?
I second it.
I second it.
Ms. Robinson seconds the motion. If, if you're in favor, say aye. Those opposed should say no. The, the resolution's adopted. Item number two on our expanded agenda is resolution number zero eight twelve fifty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the state of Louisiana for the Bastrop Police Department. Uh, this was a five thousand dollar grant, uh, for less-than-leasile weapons tasers. Uh, we didn't mention this, but we also got five thousand dollars that we didn't expect to get, but that, that this resolution needs to be adopted so that we can accept that as well.
I make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Ms. Robinson makes the motion.
I'll second Ms. Robinson's motion.
Mr. Gordon does. It's in the discussion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Gordon does.
Don't worry, yeah.
Mr. Lenore seconds his motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.